Welcome to Special Section, Magalhães Housing Authority's Board of Commissioners meeting for PM 33 for 2023, sitting hall complex, House District 4. Mr. Machado, introduce.
I'm trying to read the sub plan of the United States of America and to their republic, according to its stance. One nation, under God, indivisible, where the big angels are.
If you look up to.
No, sir, I don't have any.
Okay, discussion items, discussion direction, discussion direction and actions, standards and troubles status response.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So as part of our actions that we need to take to get off the troubled list, we needed to provide in writing two letters to HUD, one on the substandard and one on the troubled status. Both of those letters need to be approved by the commission. By the way, Mr. Mayor, Mrs. Murieta was unable to attend the meeting today. She had a prior appointment, so our RAB representative is not here today. Anyway, so these two letters, which are in your packet, need to be approved by the commission. We would need a motion to approve them and to authorize one of the housing staffs to sign them. Or if you want somebody else to sign them, please make that motion so we can prepare them for the appropriate signature. Staff recommends that you approve the submittal of these two letters.
Mr. Mayor.
Make a motion.
Would you move to with a signature of your pocket?
Yes.
That's your motion, my second. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
These letters are just a formality of putting on paper what the requirements are for us to follow in order to come to the steps to get us back into good graces. According to the email trail, these letters have already been approved by Ms. Duran. So I guess it's just a formality since she appears to have the last word in what we're doing as a commission. So I just want to voice my opinion regarding that. I don't think she has any authority about that. I do agree with the letters. I just don't agree with how this is being handled. All I got to say.
Any comments, anybody? As far as I know, basically, while these letters will get us in the good track, you know, and unfortunately, we cannot control Ms. Duran. Duran is, you could say, a representative with HUD. And I think I move to
It's all moved in second.
Uh huh, second, so to, yes, sir.
I don't think that these letters will get us back into good graces. It's just a plan and an outline of what steps we need to take, if that's my interpretation of these letters. Is that correct, Mr. Machado?
Yeah, totally correct. It's one piece.
Correct.
One piece of the process that needs to be done, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And just so you'll know, I, there's a spreadsheet that I put out. This is the new revised one. It's not the first one, but it was a revised one. Get the old one that you received and throw it away. And I also emailed this to all of the commissioner members.
Okay, well, that said, any other questions or comments? Call for the vote. All those in favor? Aye. All those against?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next discussion and action impossible, excuse me, discussion direction, possible action, authorizing the chairman of the Magalhães Housing Authority Board of Commissioners to sign HD Form 51999, general dispository agreement.
Mr. Mayor, this is another form that we need to submit to HUD for a depository agreement. It's been placed in your packet for your review. It requires the signature of the chairman, which is yourself, Mr. Mayor, and staff recommends that you approve the submittal of this form to HUD.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, well, that's it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Motion passes. Thank you. You guys get it ready and I'll sign up what you need. Okay, thank you. Communications, ratification of submission of forms that were uploaded to system for 2022 plan. Commissioner Graddias.
Thank you, Chairman. I put this on the agenda because I became aware that we have already signed some documentation in furtherance of the board going ahead with the PHA plan for 2022. Have copy that have been signed by yourself and Mr. Kissinger on April 3rd. In reviewing these, I was going to move to ratify them, but in reviewing these documents, it reads at the top, acting on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, a public housing agency or its chairperson as authorized with the PHA, I approve the submission of the 2226 five-year plan. Okay, first of all, there was no hearing on this. There was no approval by the commission. So how can we be signing something that we're acting on behalf of the board? Item three says that the PHA has to have the RAB approve it. We need to have a 45-day wait period between this also. This 45-day period was scheduled to end on April 3rd. We never had that meeting. Regardless, it was brought up by then Director Thompson in the past. That's where we're going. We're working towards getting these things cleared, but now we're jumping the gun, trying to move ahead on something that we're cutting corners. On the bottom of said form and the other subsequent forms, it says, I hereby certify that all information stated herein, as well any information provided to accompany her with, is true and accurate. Warning, HUD will prosecute false claims and statements. Conviction may result in criminal and/or civil penalties. I forewarned to want to be complicit in a criminal or civil investigation down the road because we simply are cutting corners and not following timelines and guidance. I would like Mr. Machado to give me some clear, some guidance on that because those are strong wordings on formal documents. So I want to make sure that we're doing things right. Yeah, we're behind, we're not complying, but we're not the only PHA in the country that's doing this. If we're going to get this ship going forward like we talked about, let's do it the right way and not cut corners. Several items coming up for approval down on the bottom of the agenda, same thing. We haven't done the 45-day wait process. We haven't done the public hearings. We haven't had RAB meetings to approve them or open it up to them. I mean, why are we cutting corners just because we're being classified as a commission that's, or a PHA that's failing? If the commission is going to do their job, we want to make sure we do it right. At least that's my stance. I don't know how the rest of the commissioners feel, but those are strong words. And if we're getting into criminal or civil issues, I'm not ready to move forward with that. So I would like Mr. Machado to please give me guidance on that.
Well, in terms of I get, in terms of ratification, ratification just means that the subsequent authorization of an act that was previously done. And as I've indicated before, the Board of Commissioners, just like the council, has to act as a body. But if there are occasions where, in this case, the mayor had to sign something or the form came for his signature, then it can be signed and then the council or the commissioner have to ratify it. Now, the best practice obviously is to get the authority to sign that before you do it. Ratification is just done, it's after the fact authorization. And obviously, we should try to get authorization before.
I understand that, but how can we ratify something that was done improperly is not my new question. I'll ratify something that was done the right way, but this was, there hasn't been a 45-day period on this. It was announced, meeting never took place, the RAB hasn't met, at least as far as I know, to approve this. So we sign that these are facts. We're actually signing that these are facts that never happened. So if I ratify something, I'm ratifying that the facts are correct in this, correct?
No, no, it depends what you're ratifying. If you're ratifying the ability for somebody to sign it, you're ratifying only that. I don't know the contents of that. I have not seen it, but Mr. Kissinger has, and he can address that part.
So it's my understanding on the 2226 five-year action plan, which those are documents part of. They're also included in the plan that you're going to approve here a little bit further down the agenda. And it's my understanding that the RAB did approve this on January 12th. And it also is my understanding that it was published in the paper as required.
Yeah, but we didn't have that meeting.
I'm sorry.
The April 3rd meeting, we didn't have.
No, we're having it tonight. We're approving the five-year plan today, not on April 3rd. We're approving it today. I agree with you. We didn't have it on April 3rd, but we're having it today.
Is this a public hearing on this plan or is this a special section of the housing? Now you got me confused. We need to have a separate meeting, which is a public hearing for the plan. That's it. Now we're incorporated into a special session of the board where we do regular business. So we got two different issues that we're dealing with.
Enlighten me. I don't know much about housing, but I want to learn. And I've been trying to do my homework, so I want to make sure we get this right, so it doesn't come back later. And we're trying to fix it, but yet we're putting ourselves in a deeper hole.
Yeah, my understanding, Councilman, was there was a requirement to get this five-year plan approved today and submitted to HUD so we can get the next five-year plan done before June. And we got some timelines that we have to accomplish as spelled out there. The deadline for this five-year plan was today's date. I wasn't aware of a potential public hearing. I don't know if today constitutes.
We have the one there that we got in the package for April 3rd, which was advertised in the international. That was for the PHA plan 22, right? PHA, that's it. We have a CFP and a PHA today that we haven't done a 45-day wait period or haven't publicized it in the international, or at least is not incorporated in our packet as it should be. Or the fact that there was a RAB meeting that took place on any one of these. If they, if the acting directors have information of that RAB meeting where they had a chance to speak on this PHA plan and approved it, that would be welcome because that gives us information.
Yeah, my only understanding is they had it on April 4th. That's all I, that's all I, I wasn't there.
What did you have on April 4th?
The RAB meeting to approve it, the five-year plan. January, sorry.
Do you have minutes of that or something you can share with us?
You have an email or something, right, where they called?
Yes.
Okay, so even if that were the case, they had their meeting on April or January, you publicized this 45 days prior to that?
Not for the RAB meetings, no.
That one has also a 45-day, right? Am I wrong with these 45 days? It's here in our work in process thing. Part of our number 14 and 15 says that PHA will comply with RAB process, 45-day public comment period and public hearing. We haven't been doing those public hearings or RAB meetings, and we're trying to authorize or even ratify something. I'm not opposed to ratifying a signature, but I'm not going to ratify a process that's been done wrong. And it's not going to set us back if we wait 45 minutes, 45 days to do this the right way. That's my opinion on this, personal opinion, that's it.
I can look at that, Commissioner. It was my understanding, and maybe it's my misunderstanding, that you have the RAB board approve it, then you wait your 45 days, and then you have the commissioners approve it. I wasn't, I wasn't aware of that step, Commissioner. My understanding was the RAB approves it 45 days for public comment where they post it and they have it over there at the, on the desk of the housing authorities so people can come in, approve comment or what have you, and then the commission approve it. I wasn't aware of an additional meeting for public comment. And if that's the case, then I agree with you, probably going to need to do that.
I got a question. Just a clarification. This is the public meeting. The only reason it's called special session, it's because it's, that's the same thing that we call our second council meeting, a special session.
Hey, but if we're considering resolutions, they shouldn't be on a public hearing then. Two totally different meetings.
I don't know.
It all depends how it's scheduled. We can have the public hearing and then follow the meeting, but it all depends how it's scheduled. I don't know how this was scheduled.
I have a question, Mr. Kissinger. Is this, is this the first time we do this? I mean, there's so much confusion. I mean, is it's every year? Because I don't remember going through all this. And I'm glad that Mr. Counselor, Commissioner Graddias is really doing his due diligence. But again, it's a dumb question or it's a rhetorical question. I guess it's not the first time we've done this in the HUD, in the housing meeting, but then I'm, then I'm a tad worried because what if we did skip these steps in the past? Maybe Mr. Bohorkis, you can, you can enlighten us. You were a housing director and have we, have, do you remember us doing everything step by step?
Yes, we followed all the HUD guidelines as far as approving the.
And the special meeting and the meetings that.
Yes, this is, this is a public meeting. So anybody that wants to make any comments or suggestions, they come, you know, this is publicized and anybody's invited to the meeting. If they want to have any comments made on the, on any plan, on any resolution that's presented by the housing authority, they're welcome to do it.
Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Graddias.
I understand this is also a public meeting, and this public meeting was publicized, probably Friday?
Friday.
So that's way short of the 45 days because this public notice that was in the paper was for an April 4 meeting that we didn't have. We had an April 5 meeting where this was brought up, but it didn't trigger to look into what's going on. We're missing dates, we're missing timelines. That's why we're in trouble. We need to stop doing things because Ms. Duron says, I need them now. We need to do them the right way. We need to follow the steps, and we got to make sure, we're dealing with federal funds. There's strong wording on these documents that I am really apprehensive about, just the cookie cutting and passing it through because HUD says they're going to prosecute. It might not be true, but yet this threat is still there regardless. So why not do it the right way to stay on the good side of HUD? We're not losing money. People think we might be losing money, but they're not going to stop the funding just because we haven't complied with some steps. We're on track to get things done right, so why don't we just move forward and get things done right? I would really like Mr. Machado to take a look at these documents I have highlighted so he can legally give us a better position so that we can move forward on these. Because I think they were signed without commission approval, first of all, which here we're attesting that the commission approved it, and now we're trying to go back door and fix it. That's not the right way to do things.
I've not seen those, Mr. Graddias, so, you know, those weren't not provided to me, so I don't know how to answer that.
When in lieu of, in lieu of not having all the correct information, I moved to table my item here and give Mr. Machado an opportunity to review this, and we can visit it later. And if we have to follow the timelines, let's follow the timelines. But I moved to table my ratification.
My second. There's no action then.
Well, there's it is an action item because it was a ratification submission. So the motion is to table it, not take any action at all on this. So there's a, if there's a motion to table in a second, then you vote on whether or not to table it, not deal with it today, or you go back to the same motion.
Can I ask the directors, your point of view is, you know, what, what's the, is there an urgency? You have these, get them done? Can you, that, you know, what's, where do we stand?
Okay. I'm going to just read a little bit of what information Ms. Duron sent us. So first and foremost, the NHA's 2022 five-year plan was late due. It was due last year on 6/30. And for multiple reasons, including noncompliance, miscommunication, and risk of sanctions, but more important because the fiscal year 22 was late. The NHA did not require a board approving any new activity assigned to existing work activities or beginning the 2022 plan with the actual CFP grant amount authorized for 22. Additionally, the previous director notified HUD and the board he had compiled. He was complied with HUD requirements prior to 22 CFP submission. Because the NHA had an approved board and HUD fiscal year 2125 five-year plan, we simply carried forward the work activities to the fiscal year 2226 plan, since Director Thompson never carried out the 2125 work activities, with the exception of the current year of any new rolling CFP plan. The remaining four years are only estimates, as are budgeted amounts assigned to the work plan, to the planned work activities. These amounts are adjusted based on the HUD's notification of the CFP grant amounts for the current fiscal year and the actual expenditures that PHA expects, expands for any work activity. Therefore, awaiting the board approval, resolution approving the 2022 plan is formally required for submission for the NHA document package.
I agree with the findings, and I realize that we are in default or in bad standing, but she does not give us direction to waive the 45-day waiting period. She does not give us the right to skip the notice procedure, which has been done in some sort of resemblance, and it does not give us the right to waive the public hearing and then the commission approving it. So we're missing steps. She in no time in what you read ever gave us the right or told us waive these plans and get it through. I know it's urgent and we are a few years behind, and I know that we had COVID a couple of years in between, and we're not using excuses. Let's just do it the right way. They're not going to take the money away because it's already been allocated for the five years. Now we're just doing because we're in a bind, in a hand slap. We got to do a revised one every year. This is my understanding. If not, even what she wrote, she says that we would do it every two years or something like that. I got her email too. But just because she's saying, I need it, doesn't mean take shortcuts and do it. Let's do it the right way. That's what I'm trying to figure out.
I have a question. Are we the only housing in the United States that has this problem?
I am not sure.
Mr. Bohorkis, but you know, why worry what other people are doing, just worry about us?
Of course I worry because, from my understanding, you know, we got a letter here from 3,200 other housing administrations, and they seem to be behind or we have no problem. So, yeah, it seems that we're trying to rush something that I don't think it's just limited to this city or to our, you know, housing. So I am really concerned about, I don't mind, like Mr. Graddias said, ratifying, that's fine, that's fine. But it's the little steps that we're, it seems that we're missing. And that, maybe we may say, well, let's just get it through and let's get it done. But what if, what if, what if down the line it comes back? And it affects us, you know, so I would think that the best deal is that Mr. Machado just reviews the documents and tells us, gives a clear picture of what's, what's going on.
Commissioner.
Yeah, I have a question. Who do you use as your legal guidance? Do you call Mr. Machado? There seems to be some, you know, misunderstanding in everybody's part, and it seems like it's been going for many, many years. You know, comments have been made, it's not the first time. So who do you call when you have a legal question or do you have any guidance by an attorney?
It's the part of the city, our legal department.
But it's obvious you didn't, oh, okay, but you haven't because Mr. Machado, Machado just noted that he wasn't aware of some of this stuff that's been going on.
No, we didn't because since this is every year, we do the same process. We didn't think it was.
So every year that you go through the same process? You've, you noted earlier, unless I misunderstood, that every year there seems to be the same issue? What you're going through, what did you say about that? That every year it's the same issue that you're going through, process, issue, process? What did you say?
No, 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 every year we go through the same process.
Okay.
We actually like, we're going to approve 2022, 26. So right there, you're approving all the years.
Okay, I understand that, yeah.
If you bring the other one, which is 2327, you're only approving the year that we're adding.
That you're adding to, yeah.
You're not, because you already technically approved all the other years.
Yes, I understand that, but on the dates that Mr. Graddias is bringing up, is there some, is he correct in your opinion that they haven't been followed?
Well.
Or you weren't aware?
Well, everything was followed as Mr. Thompson did the 45 years, no, the 45 days. He did the RAB meeting, he posted it for 45 days.
Oh, so he did do that?
Yeah, he did.
Okay, so there shouldn't be, there shouldn't be a problem then?
No, it shouldn't be a problem. The only thing, because like Mr. Graddias said, the meeting was canceled. It was never, it never took place. It wasn't brought up again.
Okay.
But, but just remember that you're approving the five-year plan. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Bohorkis, but we're adding a year. Every year, we're adding a year. So all the, for instance, 23 to 27, you already approved 20, the other plan was 23, 24, 25, 26. We're only adding one year. Every year, we add one year.
Yeah, so we all do our due diligence and do the best we can, right? And we do it in good faith. And so we have Mrs. Duron emailing us, and then we have the city attorney emailing us, and then we have, we have faith in you as appointed deputy director. And you have a lot of institutional knowledge, you've been there for many years, so have you. So we're doing our best in moving forward. Okay, so today, do you agree on tabling it so that we can follow, well, Mr. Graddias says we haven't been following?
I don't agree.
You don't agree with what?
Tabling.
Tabling, okay, just want to make it clear.
It's gonna take longer.
Okay.
He wants us to follow the.
And what consequences are there if we wait?
Because we don't, we don't receive the funds.
Oh, so this, this involves funding? And is that, is that Mrs. Duron's opinion or has she?
No, 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 it needs to be approved in order for HUD to release the.
Okay, I realize that, but who says that?
It's a policy.
It's a policy, okay. So I would suggest in the future, just so that we could have the legal guidance of Mr. Machado, especially now in these critical situation that we're in, and I agree that we should follow policies and whatever processes there are, that you seek his legal advice way in advance so that we don't sit in a meeting here and, well, this is what I know and I've been, haven't been told this and so forth. If you could do that, please, thank you.
With that response, Terry, I would just like to ask, what funds are being withheld?
22, grant 22.
But you're saying we're only approving 26 or 27? But you're saying we're only approving 26 or 27 because that's already been approved? So, why?
Because, because Fund 22, we should have received it. It should have been the process last year. So, we should have received the funds by when? September.
If we're approving 26 or 27, whatever we're adding, that means somewhere down the road, we already approved 22, so there shouldn't be a problem.
Yes.
Am I missing something here?
No, that's correct, right? Yeah.
Okay. And if we go forward and do all this thing, we're still not gonna be out of the clear because we don't have an audit, correct?
We don't have an audit yet, no.
So, what's the hurry? If we don't have an audit, we're not gonna be taken off the naughty list until we get that done. Let's do the process right?
Yes, Mayor. Maybe I can help. Maybe I can help with that.
Go ahead.
Tell me if I'm wrong, Terry, because it's very confusing. We received some documents that needed to be signed and submitted for the 2225 plan that we're going to be approving here pretty soon. Correct? Those documents have already been submitted because they're late. They're over a year late. Okay? And tonight is the first time we're going to have the commissioners approve it. On a normal, if it was normal, if we were on time, they would approve it. We would sign the documents and we would submit them, right? But that didn't happen, right? So, we need to get going on this. And there's another issue for time, Commissioner, is that the next five-year plan is due when? In June, correct? And you can't even upload the five-year plan and get it going until what? We get this one up. So, that's the quagmire or the dilemma that we're at, Commissioner. I know it's confusing, was confusing to me. If we gotta wait another 45 days or start the process again, I don't know what the ramifications are to start the process again and approve this plan in an additional 45 days. I can ask that question. We can definitely bring it back in the next meeting. But that's my understanding of where we're at and how we're, where we're at. Those documents that the mayor and I signed were brought over by Terry and said, "John, I gotta get these signed so we can open up for, to finish off another thing on our bad boys list." So, that's kind of where we're at. I agree. We can probably have Joe go through the whole thing and come up with the legalities. I would not want any of us to get in any trouble at all. Those are never, I don't think anybody hears intentions, but we can definitely do that. I'm just saying, I don't know what the ramifications are. Either way, I recommend that we approve the five-year budget, Councilman. These seem like very routine forms that are involved in every year budget. You just sign them and send them. They're part of the grant process. That's the best explanation I can give you.
I got it.
Commissioner.
I understand, but what we're approving is a PHA plan, nothing to do with funding. The PHA plan is the one that tells them what we're gonna be doing, day-to-day operations, stuff like that. The capital fund plan is the money plan. So, we're talking about two different plans here. So, we need to get on the same page. Otherwise, we're just keep getting deeper and deeper in mud. The capital fund plan is the money plan. That's how I understand it. And the PHA plan is the how it's gonna be spent. Is that a good way of interpreting? From what I've gathered, that's what I understand. So, we're dealing, but there's no money in the 22, so why not do it the right way?
Vice Mayor or Commissioner?
The PHA plan does include a budget for the CFP, right? For the capital fund plan. It's part of the PHA plan, that budget. So, it does include funding.
Commissioner Montiel.
Yeah. So, I'm getting mixed signals, I'll be very honest, from both of you. I really am. Because, yeah, you are given a job, okay? And you've been here for many, many years. So, you know exactly what's going on, okay? So, we get mixed, I get mixed messages from you. You're trying to go both ways and we shouldn't do that. Let's, definitely, you're saying that you're in agreement with Mr. Gradius, that we should, you know, there are two different items here. So, what do we do? Can you, do we table it? Can you wait? Because Terry just said we couldn't. And then now you're both saying, yeah, you know, you're saying, "Oh, yeah, there are two different issues. That might, you know, we could table one, not the other." Please decide.
Okay. Good afternoon. And yes, in my opinion is we should approve the plan.
I can't hear you.
I'm sorry. We should go ahead and not table it and approve it because it delayed again the fund for the capital funding for the 23. So, we're trying to prove something from 22. Yes.
The plan is not what they're approving or tabling. And I think that's where some of the little bit of confusion is going on. They're gonna give you a recommendation to approve the plan. The item in front of us today is to ratify, the item in front of us right now that we're requesting to table is to ratify the documents that were signed that are included in that plan that we're gonna ask you to approve.
Yeah, I realize that. I understood that.
I didn't know if Martín understood that.
Do you understand as a director?
Yes.
Okay, good. I would be, it would be kind of frightening if you don't understand what's going on. Okay, maybe that's why we're in this boat here. We don't want to blame it on past directors or any. You guys are presenting something to us and it seems like you're just going both ways. And we shouldn't do that. Let's do the right thing. And so, do you think we should table it because of these two different issues that Mr. Gradius is bringing up?
In my opinion, we shouldn't table it.
Okay, and you, Terry? Okay, all right.
Mr. Doh, Commissioner Doh. Your mic? Mic? Mic?
Right now, they made it kind of clear that we're not gonna be getting in any trouble by approving this. This plan is being presented right now. I think in the past, I didn't want to ask, but I think in the past, we had similar issues over the years. And, you know. HUD's never trying to get. Trying to.
Turn on your mic.
Make us respond to those timelines. And I think what we need to do is probably get together with Martha and hopefully in the near future on anything that we're more up to standard on the timelines and there's more communication. I think that's what's hindering us right now, lack of communication with HUD and/or Martha. So, I think we should, my personal is to go along and approve it and be more prepared in the future.
Commissioner Bonilla.
Do we know for a fact that if we don't get this approved today? You said the word, "They're not gonna release the funds." Am I correct? So, if we would wait, I'm just saying, a few days, we can't get the funds released if we don't approve it today. They will lose that money.
We need to sign restitution in order for HUD to release the funds.
Commissioner Gradius.
Okay, can you guys go on record and say that the 45-day notice was followed, that the RAB meeting approved this and that we had a public hearing so that we can take the next step? Could you guys go on record and tell me that happened? That did happen. And you will be able to furnish us documentation?
This is the public hearing, correct?
Well, we're still missing the, it was published in the International for April 4th, which never happened. So, the publishing might not be valid anymore. I'm not sure. I want some guidance on that. We never had the meeting. Would that process start over from April 4th? Do we need to do another one? The RAB meeting, we don't have any documentation in our package that there was a RAB meeting that approved the plan. And if this plan was prepared back in January, how come it wasn't submitted in February, March, April? Well, April, we're in April.
Okay.
Commissioner.
I think we have more than 45 days. The advertisement went for April 4th. We're on April 20th. It's over 45 days, so it's well over the period that they wanted.
I understand, but the 45-days period was on April 4th. That's when we should have had a meeting. There was no meeting. So, if you're saying this is the public hearing, this is the public hearing that complies with the 45 days? If we can say it's okay, it's more than 45 days, so this is the public hearing to do that? And we have attestation or confirmation that a RAB meeting took place and they approved it, then we should be okay?
Commissioner, I think our little sidebar discussion here might help. The five-year plan has been submitted and rejected by HUD because the resolution hasn't been done. Right? And those forms hadn't been signed, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, if the commission passes the five-year plan, which is down the road here, we will submit that to HUD for their approval. I'm assuming that once they approve it, we should be good, we should be golden. We should be good. And I'm assuming that we put all the paperwork in front of HUD, 45 days, RAB approval, right? We send that information up to HUD and they approve it and then allows you to do your next plan.
Start with the 2020.
So, I think our stop, our safety guard is HUD approving the documents that we're submitting. That should make the commission feel comfortable. If they reject it, then guess what? I think we'll be right back in front of you. I think that's a a good way of moving forward.
That's good. Any other comment?
No, that was, that was our little discussion.
Okay. Commissioner Gradius.
So, we're looking at down the road, we're doing the 2324 plan and then the 2226 plan, which is the one we're trying to incorporate here.
Correct.
Okay, so those documents that were submitted without board approval, can we get rid of those and authorize the chairman to sign new documents to fulfill those requirements and move forward?
Absolutely. We can date them with today's date if you guys pass it. Because the forms are online. We'll just print them out, we can read.
I understand, but there was an urgency and the comment was made. I hadn't, wanted my signature, so I signed. As an attorney, I wouldn't give, you wouldn't give advice to anybody sign a document that they're not familiar with and don't know the consequences of. There are some strong words in those documents, as you can see by what I highlighted for you. I wouldn't want to be in those shoes of somebody signing, especially on behalf of all of us when we didn't have any input to what was being done, just because there's urgency and we're in a hurry? That's where problems start and that's how we might end up losing our housing. It probably won't happen, but that's a small step. And one small step after another step, pretty soon you're running. So, let's do this the right way. That's my concern. I was on board. I never had any issues with HUD. I just wanted it to be done the right way. And Ms. Duron somehow decided to go after me because she said I wasn't aware of the ARS, which only required us to provide a resolution, which was done in 2017. So, we are compliant with that state law, which she referred. So, maybe she's not as up to date on that ARS as I was when I reviewed this. I just want to make sure that that goes on the record because I don't like being called out like that. If I'm wrong, I'm wrong. I'll take it. But let's do things the right way. I never had anything to do with HUD itself. It was a process that we had discussed. It had nothing to do with this.
So, then, if I understand correctly where we're at, we're gonna redo the forms that are going to be submitted in accordance with that, with the approval. And then we're gonna be re-signed and redated, right? So, if that's the case, then we don't have to ratify anything.
Right.
Okay, let's just do it that way. If there's nothing to do in terms of the ratification, that this item here, it becomes moot. So, we, easiest way to do it, just vote yes on the table and we'll get.
Correct. If you decide to, maybe the motion when you do the five-year plan is that you hopefully approve the plan and in the motion, you say instruct staff to throw away these forms and redo them for a new signature with today's date. And then we can submit it. And I think that's a very good way of moving forward.
That'll work.
Are we both to table the ratification?
I make no difference at this. Why don't we withdraw the motion to table? Withdraw the second and then just have no action on that item and we'll move on to.
Withdraw my motion.
Withdraw my second.
Okay. So, there'll be no action on this item, letty? And we move forward. Thank you. Good discussion. Housing resolution. Consideration possible action of housing resolution 2023-04-02, resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the Housing Authorities of the City of Nogales approving and adopting the Nogales Housing Authorities operating budget for April 1st, 2023, that's March 31st, 2024.
Second.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
If I could get you to make your motion to approve this with the amendment document that I have placed in front of you, that is provided to us by HUD. If the, if the budget has changed from when I put it on the agenda till when we're gonna submit it, there's approval, there's a form that needs to be signed off. Those changes were made after Terry met with finance and there was some changes within our salary structure, very slight changes. You'll see them in our salary structure that we need to make those changes. But the budget's good to go to approve with those changes on that form. And actually, I'm not real sure whose signature is required on the form, but maybe the motion could approve the signature of that form also.
Chairman.
The chairman? Two forms, yeah.
Commissioner Montiel.
I just have a quick question. Does this include, Mr. Kissinger, the salary increase to the both acting directors?
I'm sorry.
Does this include the salary increase for the two acting directors? This change?
No. No, that's our salaries that are budgeted for. Their acting salaries is not in the budget. There never are in the budget. We don't budget for.
Okay, so they're not included, but they are being compensated?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. They deserve it. Thank you.
Go ahead, Commissioner Gradius.
This question is for Martín. You can stand up to the podium here. This plan that you submitted, from my understanding, was submitted in January for Lindsay. Can you tell me why it took so long for Lindsay to provide this? And maybe that could be one of the issues we're behind because it was never done?
Just to clarify, Commissioner, that is on the budget?
Yes, we're doing the CFP. First resolution is for the CFP, which is the funding plan, right?
The operating budget.
No, it's the operating budget.
Operating budget?
Yes.
Is that the one where we have salary changes and all that other stuff?
Yes.
But wasn't that submitted, didn't Lindsay provide us these?
Yes.
But wasn't this submitted in January? My question is only why it took so long for Lindsay to give us this budget back? Or did we already have it?
I don't think we're late on the budget.
No, we're not late on it.
No.
Our, our budget is from four-one to three-thirty.
All right, thank you, that answered my question. Second, hold on. On this new one, twenty-three, twenty-four is what we're doing.
Yes.
Did we wait the forty-five days and did we have a RAB approval for this?
Don't require that for the operating.
We don't require it. Okay, good. Doing good so far. All right, those are my two major questions, thank you.
Any other questions? So we got a, a men to, to include this form?
The easiest way is, is amended by Mr. Kissinger. Make the motion as amended by Mr. Kissinger and then the record will, will get it on the record.
So basically, as amended by Mr. Kissinger, that obviously the document number O, OMB number twenty-five, seven, seven, zero, zero, dash zero, zero, two, six, uh, be part of this budget, uh, with, that needs two signatures. Any second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes, letty?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
With the amendment, thank you. Uh, next item, number two, consideration possible action of housing resolution twenty-twenty-three dash zero four, zero, dash zero three, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the Housing Authorities of the City of Nogales approving and adopting the PHA five-year action plan for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two dash twenty-twenty-six.
With the new forms.
With the new forms. With, this one is the, including the new forms and dates.
Two second, please.
Mr. Bonilla, Commissioner Bonilla. Any comments, questions?
We kind of did.
Commissioner Gradias.
We'll refer to this work in progress. Do you guys have this work in progress?
We do.
Item H four and item H five, can you elaborate on this for me, please? H four and H five?
Last page.
Last page, six of six. See, since we're back in the same.
That's, that's what you have in front of you.
Okay. So it has been published, the RAB voted on it, approved it. Now we're moved, this is our public hearing.
Correct.
And then we're having another hearing to approve it? Or we just straight through approving it?
Straight through.
So it's the same meeting?
Uh-huh.
Public hearing and, all right. Are we good with that, Mr. Machado?
Yes, I'm, I'm okay with it, but, but in the future, we've we'll have to be a little bit more specific on the public hearing aspect and then the, the action.
I, I think it's too separate.
And we can work on it and we can, need to work, Terry, on the, the form of the resolutions indicating who's authorized to sign and et cetera, et cetera.
I think we did that.
We can do that, that's not a problem.
That'll fix it.
We can fix all these two. Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do you think that? And just a comment, uh, Mr. Machado, you know, we, we talked about second, you know, the second meeting of the month always being a special session and all that, but it's, it is a public meeting, right?
Oh, it's a public meeting, yes, sir.
Okay.
And the only reason I designated it special is because by charter.
We only have one.
It, it talks about the, the regular meeting on the first. We only have to have one regular meeting, uh, at the beginning of the month. So any meeting after that, by definition, is a special meeting.
Thank you.
But there's a difference between a public hearing and a public meeting.
Yes.
Because there's two separate purposes for it.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
So just because we're having a public meeting doesn't make it our public hearing.
No, that, but you can have both at the same time.
But we got to designate it on the agenda as such, for the future.
That's what I want to do.
Absolutely, thank you. And, and Commissioner, you talked about H five?
Yes, sir.
H five is the one that we're going to do.
Correct.
That's the new one.
That's, that's the one that.
The forty-five day.
Correct.
Approval, during the public hearing and the resolution.
Correct, and that hasn't happened yet.
No, that's what we're doing.
Right.
We're on board now.
Wait, 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 when you said that's what we're doing, that's what we're going to be doing, right?
What we're talking about.
That's what, the signing of this is going to open up for them to start working.
On that one to bring back to you, okay.
Go ahead, Commissioner Bohoricas.
Terry, uh, on the annual plan, the, the RAB minutes should be in that plan also, right? So, so, you know, Commissioner Gradias was asking that, that we didn't receive the minutes, but they are included in the annual plan, right? The, the RAB minutes, uh-huh, when you met with RAB and, and they, uh, recommended that you go ahead and approve the plan? Okay. So, so when it's submitted to, to HUD, they will be included in? Right, thank.
Okay, thank you, anymore? So all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, letty? Item number three, housing resolution, consideration and possible action of housing resolution twenty-twenty-three dash zero four, dash zero four, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the Housing Authority City of Nogales approving the appointment of Mayra Murrieta as a resident commissioner of the Nogales Housing Authorities Resident Advisory Board for a two-year term. Any comments or questions? Go ahead.
Going through this resolution, upon reading it, there is, it's not clear whether she's being appointed as a commissioner with us for the housing or as a, as a, what is it called here?
Not the RAB, she's.
As a resident commissioner for the RAB.
No, no, no.
Which is it for us?
For you.
Okay. So that's not clear in this resolution. Again, the resolution says that whereas the U.S. Department of Housing requires resident board member, which I brought up last meeting, that we needed to fill the two positions. So this is a great step towards that. And then it says, whereas the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development conducted a management review of the housing and requires that, which we're okay. Then it says, whereas the resident advisory board met on April twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three and voted Mayra Murrieta and Paulette Piñera to represent them as resident commissioners. Ms. Paulette Piñera, if I'm not mistaken, is deceased and yet she shows up on this resolution as being at the meeting, so I have a concern with that. So we're cookie cutting stuff still here today and it's not very clear where we want to appoint Ms. Murrieta, which I know it, it's to our board, which is required. But let's, let's get things done right. I mean, we keep moving forward on stuff like this. I caught it, I'm sure someone else caught it, but we got to review this before it comes to us so that we can properly vote on things.
I, I have a question on.
Go ahead.
But wasn't, um, Mayra Murrieta already, uh, commissioner? And what happened, she, um, she just? No, no, okay, no, but she was originally. Okay, all right.
I think her term expired, that's why.
Go ahead.
Are there any issues with the wording, are we okay to vote on it?
Well, we got a men to take, make sure that's, it's cover work where Ms. Paulina Piñera is removed from the
Correct.
From the resolution. It's not on the.
And then we need to word it to say commissioner as a resident representative, maybe.
But it says residency.
Whereas takes care of that.
Whereas a residency advisory board.
I think all we need to do is eliminate
Eliminate.
Paulina Piñera and it should be good to go.
So you want, anybody amend it? So with this, uh, I'd like to amend, uh, the resolution to where the wording after, uh, Mayra Murrieta, uh, is eliminated where it says Ann Pauline, uh, Piñera. And do I have a second? All in favor? All right. Opposed? Motion passes? Thank you. No motion to adjourn? All in favor? Meeting adjourned, thank you.